Wednesday, August 3rd, 2022. The Board of Franklin County Commissioners, 8:30 a.m., roll call.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
President.
Commissioner Harris?
President.
Chair Dunn?
President.
Commissioner Dickinson? Commissioner Waymire?
President.
Going through the, uh, place of allegiance. Hey, Derek, any correspondence and, uh?
No, sir.
Okay. Anybody for public comment? Okay, consent agenda, we have, uh, claim vouchers of 261,776 dollars and four cents. And special claim vouchers of 6,693 dollars and six cents. We have a, uh, county meeting of July 27th, 2022. Payroll amount of 1 million, 227,009 dollars and 15 cents. And special payroll of 948 dollars and 13 cents. Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Uh, abstain from the minutes, yes, on the rest.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Abstain from the minutes, yes, on the rest.
Mr. Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Dunn?
Yes, thank you.
Times of business is considered prudent, list stage biz to finance two, 2022. 140 dash 14, all wheel drive, Jay Caterpillar motor graders.
Commissioners, uh, ordinarily, we would have the approval for the machines on this agenda as well. Didn't quite have everything I needed in order to make it on this meeting, but had the, uh, the, the, the numbers and that sort of thing and thought it'd be best to get the, uh, uh, the financing underway. Uh, takes a little time to advertise that and, and, uh, get the bids back. So what we have, we've got, uh, two of our, our, of our motor graders are due for replacement. Uh, we have a, uh, each one of these has a five-year, 7,500-hour, um, uh, buyback program through Foley Equipment. Uh, and we have reached the, uh, the time and the hours on, on both machines. Um, we intend to replace these blades with, uh, similar machines that we've been, uh, purchasing recently. These are 140, um, uh, all-wheel-drive blades, um, uh, probably just the right size for the operation that we have. Uh, the price for these, um, has gone up considerably since last year. Um, and they're, you know, uh, rather than being roughly $200,000 apiece, they are closer to 250. In fact, one is 245 and one is 255. And the difference there is one has a, a little less hours than the other. Gives us a little bit more bang for our buck. The list price on these motor graders is 533,150. Um, and the, the total price that we're going to be paying for both of them is, is exactly $500,000. So essentially with all of the rebates and, and whatnot that we're getting, we'll get these blades for, uh, just, just under half off, um, from the list price, which is a good deal. The financing is the same as, as what we intend to do is the same as what we've, uh, been doing recently, where we will establish a four-year payment plan with the first payment due in, um, I believe I have it in, starting in January of 2024. Uh, so what this agenda item is before you is to begin the solicita- solicitation of bids. Uh, we will send the, the bid sheet out to all of the local banks, plus a couple of others that have, uh, participated in this in the past. And we'll start that process today and then we'll have it in the newspaper next week and get those back, um, here in a couple of weeks and, and come back before you to approve that. So we're looking for approval to, uh, start the solicitation process.
Any questions with David on this? Pretty straightforward. If positive motion read, I make a motion authorize a list station of bids, finance two, 222. Uh, 140 dash 15, all-wheel drive, Caterpillar motor graders.
Motion to approve. Second.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yeah.
Chair Dunn?
Yes.
Uh, keep going, Dave.
The next item is, um, we would like to purchase a 2022 Case 721 GXR Extended High Reach Wheel Loader. We have had on our equipment replacement list now for a couple of years. Uh, we currently have a 2010 Cat 924 H Wheel Loader, uh, that spends most of its life in salt and sand and, and those kind of materials. So, uh, what we have, we have a, um, a machine that is, um, covered in rust. Uh, we wash it, we put rust inhibitor on it. Uh, we do all of those things to maintain it, but the fact is that that, uh, that constant, being in that constant salt environment, um, really does a number on these machines. And so, um, uh, although the hours aren't significant, uh, the, the, the wear and tear on the machine is to a point where we believe that if we don't replace it, uh, we're going to start having some major cost, um, repair, uh, bills associated with it. And we can't be without this piece of equipment during the winter months. It's, it's vital to our, uh, ability to, uh, take care of, uh, spreading material on our roads during snow and ice storms. Uh, we have, uh, we reached out to three different vendors, uh, Foley Equipment, Murphy Tractor, and then also, uh, uh, Case, which is represented by the, if you recall, Victor Phillips, um, company in, in, uh, excuse me, in Topeka. Uh, we spect a, a machine and all three of those companies provided, um, uh, proposals back to us. Um, Case, um, they provided the, the lowest and best bid. Uh, they're giving us $55,000 towards a trade-in, which is significantly more than any of the other, um, companies. Um, and so we feel like we're getting a, a very good machine, uh, for a, a very good price. Again, this represents, you know, we've got a, a list price of $398,000 and we're getting it for under 200. So, uh, by the time that you add in the warranty, we're getting this for half price as well, uh, which is, uh, we believe is an excellent, um, excellent deal. And it's also a good piece of equipment. This that we're, uh, proposing to buy is heavier, has more horsepower, has a larger bucket than what we currently have. So it will make, um, uh, loading our, our, uh, uh, end dumps a little bit quicker, a little more efficient. Uh, when we're digging at our shale pit, uh, to load for road rebuilds, again, it will make that a little more efficient, uh, than what we currently have. So, um, we've got staff here to answer any technical questions that you might have, but we are, we are recommending moving forward with a, uh, with a purchase of the Case 721 GXR in the amount of 196,193 dollars.
Sound like you checked all around the other equipments of similar sizes and equipment like that?
Yeah, we, in addition to, you know, just getting prices, we also, uh, uh, demoed these pieces of equipment. So we had personnel in them, operating them to, uh, make sure they were going to be, um, meet our expectations.
And the other thing is they're currently available because sometimes you order stuff and it's years out.
Yeah. Well, we, we think that we can get these within a few months. The same with the, um, the motor graders on the previous item. Uh, we'll be getting those within a few months as well.
And I know that it's probably more, again, than it probably was a couple of years ago, but you can't not have it and wait for maybe prices to come down because there's no guarantee they will.
Yeah, the, the fortunate thing for this one, in our equipment replacement plan, we, we had estimated over $200,000, close to 15 or 220, I think, is what we had in our, um, in our spreadsheet. And this comes in under that, which is nice. Uh, I'll talk a little bit during staff reports about some other equipment, uh, that we'll be putting forth. Um, I can't say that that's going to come in cheaper than what we estimated.
Will you be, uh, soliciting bids to funding or is it going to come down?
So this, um, that's, that's a great question. So this piece of equipment, the, the Case machine, will be paid from our special equipment fund. Each year we set aside dollars to, uh, to fund this and we save those dollars up in order to pay for these, uh, these items. Um, and so we will be paying cash for these through funds that we have saved over time. The only thing that we are currently going through the leasing process on is the motor graders. And that is simply because of the, the, the number of them and, um, the, um, the, the cost. It makes sense to, to go that route, but anytime that we can, we, we like to pay cash so that we don't have that ongoing burden.
Any other discussion, questions? Positive motion, me, I make a motion to approve the purchase of one 2022 Case 721 GXR Extended High Reach Wheel Loader from VLP Equipment, shared in the amount of 196,193 dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Dunn?
Yes.
Hey, we're going to discuss Franklin County EMS second quarter, 22, 2022 reports, morning.
Good morning.
Howdy.
Hello. Um, so I have the adjustment report, uh, first, from, uh, the second quarter and it totaled 99,398 dollars and 60 cents. And then in the second quarter, um, we sent, uh, roughly, um, close to about 21,000 to collections, um, to Midwest Collections. That was 2,644 dollars, 15 cents. And then to the sta- the state set-off program, 18,879 dollars and 88 cents. And I have both of them to get a signature on, uh, when we're done. Um, if we're looking at just data, uh, for the, for the second quarter, um, our call volume is down a little bit. Uh, call volume in April significantly decreased, um, but then, um, in May and June, it ticked back up. Um, so we're down about, uh, 30 calls from where we were at this point last year. Our, uh, revenue stream is, is looking good. We're a little over 30,000 over where we need to be to make budget for the year. So that's always a positive. As far as, uh, move-ups, um, we have done a total of, uh, 96 in the second quarter. So we're, uh, having our Wellsville stations having to move up to Ottawa, um, a little over more than once, uh, in the second quarter. And, um, the time that we had, uh, no ambulances available was, was 28 times. Um, I do have just the spreadsheets so that you can see the, the, uh, graphics. Ottawa South continues to be our highest call volume and that increased quite significantly compared to this time last year. Uh, then we're followed by Ottawa North and then Advent Health continues to come in third. Um, and you can see that data is relayed again in the calls per district per day. I just have a, a pie chart for our percentages of calls. Um, roughly 33% of the calls are in the Ottawa South District. Uh, roughly about 20% of the calls are in Ottawa North and roughly 15% come out of Advent Health. Um, medical emergencies continues to be our, our largest, uh, response call. And then that is being closely followed by trauma. And, um, I do have a breakdown of, uh, the top five, uh, types of calls that we ran. It hasn't really changed. Um, chest pain made it back in again though in June. But, uh, falls and, uh, breathing problems, transfers, uh, those are our, our big three. Um, Advent Health Ottawa is primarily our receiving hospital and then that's followed by Olathe Medical Center. Um, and our third would be, uh, Advent Health Shawnee Mission. Call times, again, it, it always amazes me that it seems to fall in line every year. Um, and then this, this highlights that as well. Again, we've been talking consistently for almost a year about just how much sicker our patients are. And once again, we're, we're continuing to see that trend with our ALS versus BLS, uh, calls. And then last but not least, this is just a, a, a visual graphic of the move-ups. Um, we did, uh, have to go out of the county seven times in the second quarter to help with mutual aid. And that was either in Anderson County or Miami County. And then, um, Anderson County was able to reciprocate that once for us during that same quarter. Uh, they came in and assisted us. So, um, I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
When the older folks have these, uh, medical alert buttons and you, uh, go out and help them if they fell or something like that, uh, is there a charge for that or is that a service?
So if we do not transport, we do not charge a fee. So if somebody falls, um, and we go and pick them up and they don't need our assistance any further or they don't want to go to the hospital, there would be no charge associated. So just a service we provide, that provide the community.
Okay, good deal.
And I'm, Christie, I'm sure people a lot smarter than me have, have thought about this, but just given the number of calls we get for that, is there, I, I just can't help but believe there's not something that can be done to help prevent some of that. Like I, I don't, I don't even know what it would be, if it would be access to the appropriate equipment that would help people get around or, is that something that's ever discussed in EMS circles?
Absolutely it is. Uh, one of the programs that before COVID that we had offered quite successfully was a program through American Heart Association called Stepping On. And it was a fall prevention program. Um, and that is something that we're looking at being able to get back out in the community and, and provide that as well. Um, as far as equipment, um, we can give them referrals or we could recommend, um, a lot of times people trip and fall over rugs. You know, probably shouldn't have that rug, particularly on carpet. Um, they tend to roll up. Um, and they can listen to our advice, but yes, discussing ways to prevent falls is something that is widely discussed.
Yeah. Just think about how much time, you know, staff time we spend doing that and, I don't know.
Sure. Um, usually, you know, that's the first part of your independence that starts to go and, and it's, it's, it's very, very difficult to lose your independence.
Yeah.
We're, we're aware of that as well.
There's probably some of them are multiple times you call, get called, uh, right?
Uh, we, we,
frequently, uh,
We do, we, we do have some, some high-volume users of our, of our system.
Noticing that the Advent Health, transferring to Advent Health and to Olathe Medical Center is significantly down this year compared to last year. Would that be COVID-related?
I, actually, we're not exactly sure at this point. Um, we're, I would like to continue to watch trends for the remainder of the year. Part of it was, was, um, when, when the COVID numbers were so high and they were having difficulty finding bed placement for them, there literally was no place for them to go. So that is what we're thinking happened, but I, I can't 100% definitively say that.
I like your format, Christie. It's a lot easier to read than the previous format, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Christie's, bud?
Any, any questions about EMS operations at all? And I'll tell you, Christie has it in a fantastic spot, but now's a great time if you have anything.
Need any more ambulances or anything like that?
Oh, I would. For offering, I'll take a new fleet. Um, but, uh, but, but right now, it's funny, you were, you were talking to David about, I'm assuming this is something you can get now. Um, currently, we're, we're on a, on a, a few waiting lists and they're telling me it's going to be a minimum of two to three years before we can get a new ambulance, so.
A remount or a new?
Either one.
Really?
Because it's a, there's a problem with the chassis. And that's what's slowing it down is, is that chassis. Um, so the fleet that we have now, we, we have to make it last. But if you, if you hear of a good one, um, put in a good word for us, we would, it would be great.
Somebody has an ambulance standing around?
But, um, the, the ones that we have now, uh, we have a very stringent maintenance program for them that we adhere to and we, and we keep them in, in good operating condition.
The zero status always concerns me a little bit, the status zero where you have no, no ambulances available. Is that consistent? Is it trending up? Is it?
That one is actually one that is trending up a little bit. Um, again, with just having data for about the first half of the year, it's hard to tell. I think a, a whole year is, is more consistent. Um, but it does appear that things are, are trending slightly upward in that direction. Um, the good news is, is, um, in, in after hours, we do have an administrator that's always on call. Um, and we do have the ability to, if needed, we can come back into the station and, uh, get in our backup ambulance and man that as well. Um, but that would be a fourth ambulance that was out and that's a,
But it's not necessarily, you don't have an ambulance available, you just don't have the personnel available.
That would be correct because, uh, we, we, we staff three 24/7. And, uh, anything that's, that, anytime three ambulances are out at the same time, um, that's what I report to you is that we're at status zero because we're at system status. Yeah.
How's your staffing?
Uh, staffing is slowly but surely, we're making progress. Um, we do, uh, we do have applications that are coming in. Um, and, uh, currently, right now, we have two open positions and applicants for both of those with plans to move forward with interviews within the next two weeks. And I'm sure it'll change again in a month, but that's okay.
Any other questions of Christie? I'm not going to answer, I'm not going to ask anymore.
I like the questions, so feel free to, to ask away.
Now you're doing a good job and I appreciate everything you do for, for the county. You got good personnel.
Supplies getting easier to find? Are there some of your medications and?
Um, obviously being allowed to get the, the flushes on that cooperative buying auto ship agreement has been, um, incre- just huge. Um, we were also able to just get on allocation for saline and a couple of the other medications. Uh, but what they do is they base it off of average monthly use and that is all you can get that month. So supplies are still continuing to be a challenge. But we're, uh, as of right now, we, we haven't had a, had a problem that we've had to actually mitigate. We've, we've gotten what we need.
Yeah, thank you, Christie.
Thank you. I will leave these here with you.
Okay. Okay, we're ready for staff.
Do you want to make a mo- do we need to make a motion?
What's that?
We, we, do we need to make a motion to accept the second quarter?
Yeah.
Accept a motion, accept the, uh, second quarter, uh, 2022 adjusted adjustments and collection report.
Take a motion.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yep.
Chair Dunn?
Yes. Hey, Derek, you want to start us off?
Yeah, thanks, Roy. Um, just thinking about Christie's report and all of those calls and, and I don't know that, that we recognize our dispatchers as much as we should. You know, they play a role in every one of those calls and, and I'll tell you, Sarah Pefley over there is doing a heck of a job. Um, dispatch is rolling right now. I'm really happy, uh, with where they're at. Um, I think she's building a good chain of command over there. I think Janaya is fantastic. Um, just very pleased with where that's at. I think it's far and away better than it's been in my time here. And, and some of that is the adjustments that, that you guys have approved and made, but that's, um, yeah, they're in a good spot. Our executive coordinator, Christina Claire, started Monday, um, was going to bring her down, but her head's still spinning, so I'm going to give her a week. Probably bring her down next week. Certainly feel free to stop by Admin and meet her. Um, very high expectations for her. Um, as the five of you know, you know, I'm not going to tell you that, that job descriptions don't matter, they do. But I'm more about getting talented people in a room and, and producing results and she's certainly one of those. I, I firmly believe she's a department head level higher, um, and have that level of expectation for her. She is going to run our tourism. Um, she's going to assist with HR, she's going to assist me with a wide variety of administrative duties. And so, so looking forward to, um, building that working relationship. And then the last thing is we posted our communications director position this week and are now soliciting applications for that. Have already gotten a couple pretty fantastic, um, applications and resumes. So I'll keep you guys informed of how that's going and that's all I have today.
Hey, thank you.
You bet.
Paul, you, uh, updated something? We're going to be, we're going to be at lunch today, so. Yeah, maybe. Okay. Amy, do you have anything?
We are in the process of planning our employee, uh, health and wellness fair for this year. Um, we had our first one last year that went really well. Um, but in the process, we're looking at, um, prizes that employees can enter, tickets to win, um, just like we did last year. One of those prizes that we are considering and wanted your opinion on was offering a full day off of pay for whoever wins that prize. So we'd like to offer two of those prizes, so essentially two employees would receive one full day off paid, um, each. And, uh, we would put some stipulations on it that they'd have to use it by the end of the year. Um, it would just be for whatever their normal work hours are, so whether that's an eight-hour employee or a 12-hour employee. And, um, yeah, everyone would be eligible to win that and we wanted to get you guys' opinion on if we did that, if you had any concerns.
And, and we're calling it wellness leave.
Wellness leave, yeah.
And, and certainly this is something that I support, but I, anytime we're talking about days off, that, that's just something I'm more comfortable with the five of you weighing in on. Um, I think in the grander scheme of things, I think it's something that will encourage participation. I think this will be a sought-after prize. I don't think it'll have a dramatic effect on county operations. I, again, I fully support it, but would love to hear your opinions.
Any questions, Amy, about this? Want to vote on this?
All good for the morale, um, yeah.
Can you go through it again? So what?
Yeah. So, um, last year, uh, if people, uh, go to a certain number of tables in the wellness fair, they receive a certain number of tickets to enter into however many prizes they want. Um, so this prize would be, um, there would be two drawings for this prize. And the employees who win would receive one full day of pay off. They would have to use it by the end of 2022. And for most of our employees, that would be eight hours of leave. For, um, some of our other employees, like ambulance, sheriff's office, things like that, it would be 12 hours of leave.
And a lot of our other prizes, and I forget, I mean, last year, there was like a TB and various.
Yeah, we're looking at, um, trying to, trying to make prizes that are geared towards wellness because that's what the fair is. But we're looking, um, one of the ones that went over really well last year was the gift certificate to, um, the meat, um, Baumann's, I think. But we're looking, um, one of the ones that went over really well last year was the gift certificate to, um, the meat, um, Baumann's, I think it was. That went over really well. Um, we're looking at possibly a grocery gift card, some exercise, um, equipment, things like that that people can.
And those are all paid for with the wellness grant.
Yeah, we have some leftover funds from the wellness grant, so all those would be covered by those funds.
So yeah, our prizes will be, they're not ad lorm tax dollars, they're grant funds. And this is just one that, you know, it's, it's costing staff time. And again, I, I just would like the five of you to weigh in and.
I don't know if I'd be using days off as a prize, I don't know if I'd be ready to vote on that yet. Have to think about it.
Okay. Yeah, well, we don't need an opinion today, but would love feedback from, from the rest of you.
I don't, myself don't think I have a problem with it.
If anything, it can do for a wellness, is, you know, not a bad thing, but it can't be a downside to that at all.
I think we have a consensus that, when was this gonna take place?
Um, the wellness fair will be Thursday, September 30th, here in the commission chamber. From seven to 11:00, so the drawing would be that day and like I said, they'd have to use it by the end of the year.
Okay.
Rod, do you have any thoughts on it?
I don't know if I'd have any big problems with it.
Well, I, I, I don't know that we need a vote, um, and I don't know that it's something we have to implement today. I'll work with you guys on, but we can bring it back and, um, allow for another opportunity for thought. So we'll plan on doing that before we finalize anything.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Okay, thanks, Amy. Dustin, you look, you look ready to talk.
We've got enough, uh, larger projects going on, I'd, go ahead and start, uh, keeping you guys informed as we go through. So there's kinda three of them that I'd primarily like to, to keep you update, uh, updated on right now. Back in July of 20, you guys approved a three-year contract with Microsoft for our products with them for, for basically annual invoices on that for a term of three years. Again, that invoice is currently due, I just wanna make sure you all are comfortable. We've done a zero true-up, so there's no increase on costs, we're gonna stay flat with that, but that invoice is due now. It was for $54,559.44. Again, part of that agreement that you guys approved three years ago, but it is one of my larger invoices of the year. And wanna make sure that everybody was still comfortable with us moving forward, getting that invoice paid.
And I asked him to come back in because, as he said, technically it's been approved, but this is a big enough one. I wanna make sure that you're all aware and have no issues with it. I mean, this is as.
This comes out of my software, um, services lineup budget, it's put in there every year, so. There's a portion of that that's billed back to some of the departments like district court, that's getting that services from us, so.
Was there a discussion?
Okay. Second is just a quick update, uh, two weeks ago, you guys approved our computer rotation. We've received the majority of that equipment. Uh, we are currently about 15% installed. Feedback from our users that we've already got those in to have been very positive, so. Guys are really running quickly with those and, and we've received those quite a bit earlier than I expected. We really didn't think those were gonna come in until September timeframe, so, uh, it's really been a benefit, uh, one of our offices. On their previous system, it was taking about 45 minutes to open up one of their large files, really making it not functional for, for their use. Uh, they've already got their new systems, that same file's opening up in four minutes and they're able to continue on. So very significant improvement on what we're seeing there. Third major project is what you guys approved last week on the software, um, going countywide. Uh, all those contracts have been provided back to the vendors, we're waiting to get some countersigned copies back so I could file that with Janet's office. Uh, Pub Works is already working with David, I believe he had, told me he had a meeting yesterday. They're working on getting some of that data already to go. He really expects some of that implementation, did you tell me October timeframe? So he'll likely be live on his portion of this before the end of the year. Fiddler Technologies, which was for the registered deeds function, um, has us tentatively scheduled for the first quarter of '23 to really get that implementation completed. And with the rest of it with Tyler, they're still working through where that's going to fall and they're scheduling, scheduling teams for the different pieces of that. Uh, we are working on breaking out those different teams for the different portions of that project so that we can go ahead and make sure all of our staff are ready to participate and what they're gonna be expected to do through this process as well. Uh, but we're very early in all these planning stages for that project. And realistically, as I think I mentioned last week, this is gonna be a 16, 24 month implementation process. And as I believe Derek has said, we're really looking at probably three years before we start getting comfortable and seeing some of the, the benefits back from it. Outside of that, that's our three major things. I'd be glad to answer any other questions you may have about what we have going on in the IT department.
Sounds like full speed ahead.
I'll say it's a, you guys have really provided us a lot over the last few years, so it's been a very entertaining time and guys are very appreciative of all the projects we're getting to do here lately.
David, do you have some more for us?
I've got, uh, a few things to visit with you about this morning. To continue the equipment discussion, uh, we also have a couple of, uh, tractors and mowers that are on our replacement list for this year. Those, the preliminary numbers that we're seeing are more significant than what we had budgeted. Uh, but we still have money in our, in our fund to be able to pay for those. Uh, we will look for, um, maybe a change in what we had planned in coming years to be able to offset the increased cost. So, uh, those, we're trying to assemble all the information now, so in the coming weeks, we'll, uh, hopefully have that before you for approval. Uh, we've also got a backhoe at the transfer station that, um, has been on our list for a year or two, really needs to be replaced. And we are working through the hurdles to, uh, to get the right piece of equipment, um, all the information associated with that. And then the last piece is the, uh, in the noxious weed, we've got a small material spreader that fits in back one of the trucks that we use for parking lots and subdivisions and those sorts of things. Uh, we are working on getting that piece of equipment spacked and prices on that as well. So all of these will be coming before you in the coming weeks. I just wanna give you a heads up since we're, we're talking about that. And then the motor graders will be on your agenda for next Wednesday.
Of those motor graders, um, I'd expect, once the financing comes back, it'd be at least a point, maybe two, higher than we're used to.
Yes.
Wonder if we could, at that time, once we find out what that amount is, see what it would cost to start moving towards a cash, uh, basis on our payments, on our, um, motor graders. Obviously, we don't budget you enough money to do that on top of your regular equipment. It would, it would require us coming up with the money and maybe we can't afford it. But obviously, once we start buying some cash, we'd have that debt service free to, and then it would eventually snowball and we'd be able to just continue, um,
Yeah.
you know, purchasing them outright. And when our interest rates were 1%, it wasn't really, uh, you might as well finance it, cause what was inflation last year, right?
Right.
So, it's a good deal, but, uh, I don't know that.
I've had the very same thoughts and, and, uh.
I may not be able to afford it, but I think it's getting to the point where.
We need to study it.
Maybe some due diligence just to know what that answer is.
Exactly.
Well, we could start doing that after that, in a couple of years, don't we have a, a year that we have a lot of major?
Yeah, we've got, uh, in 2026, uh, we are planning to replace four of our end dump trucks. Um, and those are gonna be over $200,000 apiece. Uh, a few years after that, we have, uh, some belly dump trucks, semis and belly dumps that will need to be replaced as well. Those also will be very expensive. But certainly, in lieu of the change in interest rates, it, I think it behooves us to really take a hard look at our, our process and how we might be able to refine it moving forward and, and what that would look like for budgetary reasons. Any other questions about equipment? Um, it's been a little while since I've talked to you about Old 50 Highway, those plans are progressing. Uh, in fact, I've got a, uh, electronic copy of some plans right now, uh, probably good enough to, to, uh, forge ahead with the funding, trying to find funding for this, which is, uh, uh, what we're, we're working on in the background. Uh, but one question came up from the, uh, from Bartland West on that. They, they asked if we were interested in exploring having a shared use path along Old 50. Uh, in essence, a bike, bicycle lane. And I didn't know if, uh, we haven't discussed that and kinda wanted to get your opinion before I had them, uh, take a look at that to see what, uh, an alignment would look like and a profile would look like and what any additional costs, construction estimates and whatnot would, uh, would look like. They still have money left in our contract, so, you know, for them to analyze that isn't gonna cost us, um, any more than what we've already, um, have budgeted for that. Uh, so I was just curious if there was any interest in exploring that or not.
So they've got a pretty good idea where boundaries and utilities and things like that are now?
Absolutely.
Is there within that footprint room for it?
You know, the, the, you're, you're, we'd be adding a little bit of extra width onto the roadway. Uh, where that would come into play is at your, um, uh, box culverts and, and those structures, that may.
What about easement access?
I, I don't believe that that's, we have plenty of right of way there, that's not gonna be an issue. And I don't think that there are utilities, uh, that close to the road that would be impacted. But certainly, as they look at this alignment, they will be looking at those things closely to, um, to make sure that there aren't, you know, uh, conflicts that we should be aware of. The, one of the benefits of, of doing this and adding that, um, might be, um, opening us up to additional funding options. Uh, there are active transportation grants and those sorts, sorts of things that are out there. That, that would need to be a component of the project in order to be eligible for those, uh, those dollars. It's just a thought, not something that we have to do, but I wanted to get your opinion on whether or not it was something you were interested in.
Is there any kinda sense, so five miles of five-foot roadway?
Something along those lines.
Roughly what that would?
I, I don't know a, a cost. But a- again, we can have them, um, the way that they've got their sheet set up in the computer, adding those alignments and, and looking at that, um, I don't, it's not going to, I, I don't believe it will adversely affect, um, um, the, the, the project or add, you know, uh, lots of extra costs that we're expecting as a part of this. It's, it's just food for thought and, and maybe another option for us to explore.
My initial thought was, we need all of the room we can to just make the lanes as wide as we can with the shoulders as good as we can, until you said, there might be additional funds available.
Yeah.
That was the only thing in there that even made me go, oh, well.
And, and I wouldn't, um, you know, there are no guarantees with those, those, uh, funding, uh, opportunities. And, and so if we were to do this, that, there may not be, um, a pot of money there waiting for us, uh, but it, it would open us up for that possibility.
I think that as the five of you consider this, um, what we need to keep in mind, and, and I am absolutely pro wellness, um, and I hope you all know that. But you think about all of the roads in our county that need work, all of the bridges that need replaced, all of the, I, I mean, putting a bike lane on 50 would be great in a vacuum, but just keep in mind that that will be funding that is not going to other roads or other bridges and, and that just needs to be part of your mental calculus as you consider all of this.
It is rough math, there's no way that much more roadway is gonna be under, it'll be probably several hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
It'd be interesting, I guess, to know, but I wouldn't pay to have that knowledge and we're not prepared.
Yeah, and, and that's just it too.
We already have an east-west bath pot, bu- uh, bike path. It'd be nice, I'd love to, yeah, I'd love to have it go all over the place and have a system and connect them, but realistically, that's.
Well, I, I didn't want to, uh, instruct them one way or the other until I brought this before you and, and got your opinions on it.
I was sent to ask them the question, I guess, if you're not gonna, prepared to.
Okay, um, if there's no other questions on that, I have one last thing and it's, it's related to, uh, KDOT funding as well. KDOT has come out with, uh, their two, uh, bridge, uh, funding opportunities programs. One is the off-system program that we, uh, you know, just about every year, we submit bridges to. Um, we were awarded the Osborne Terrace Bridge Replacement Program through this, uh, funding, uh, this off-system program. And it's time for the, uh, applications for the federal fiscal year 2024. Um, and so I have been, I've spent the last few days kinda looking at all of our bridges, uh, analyzing the bridge inspection reports, uh, paying attention to, uh, the area in which those bridges exist and what impacts, um, um, leaving the bridge as is, repairing the bridge or closing the bridge, what would that do to those areas? And we've only got a, a few that it might make sense to, to close eventually. Uh, and I'll be, at some point, we, we can have a discussion about that. But I do plan to, uh, to bring a request to, uh, apply for these funds to you here probably next week. The second program is a, um, it's another bridge replacement program, but it also includes, uh, bridges that are not on the off-system program. So bridges that might be on our FAS routes. Uh, it opens that up, uh, for funding. It also increases the funding level from a million dollars to $2 million. So it makes some of the more expensive bridge replacement projects a little more, a little easier for us to, to reach. And so I, I think that, um, we don't have many of those bridges that would fit into that category. But I do have one that I'm exploring. Uh, I'll be having a meeting with our bridge engineers to make sure that, uh, the, the information I'm putting together, my thought process is, is on point and that we would have, um, an opportunity for these bridges to qualify in this other program. Uh, so I'll be bringing that to you probably next week. And then, uh, applications are due by September 1st or 2nd, right in there. So these applications aren't, it, these applications don't require all of the, um, NEPA studies and environmental, all of those things that, uh, that we've talked about recently. These are just standard fact sheets. What's the bridge number, what's its efficiency rating and those kinda figures? And then they, KDOT will review that and make the selection based on that information. So there's no opportunity for us to really, um, uh, tell our story.
Get narrative attached, it's just.
It's, it's just basic facts. And so anyway, I just wanted to bring that and make you aware so that whenever you see that on your agenda next week, you, you've got an idea as to what we're, we're trying to accomplish here. And that's, that's all I have.
And questions of David? I imagine Janet has a few things for us.
Well, the first thing I'd like to start with is that, um, we have the canvas set for Monday, the 8th. And you guys do have a study session planned on that day. So depending on what the situation is with the study session, whether we have a study session or not, if, if you don't have a stu- end up having a study session, we'll plan to have the canvas at nine o'clock down at the courthouse, um, in the second floor courtroom. If we do, then we will, um, schedule that accordingly, uh, shortly after your study session is over. I still would like to hold it at the courthouse, if that's okay with you guys, just because of transportation of documents. We need our equipment to be able to scan the provisional ballots, so we don't have to hand count them. If you remember, those of you who were on the board when we did some hand counts, that takes a lot of time. And I think you'll, you'll remember that it saved a lot of time by being able to scan the ballots, as many of them as we can. So, um, I would like to do that. So we'll be working, um, with your study session agenda to make sure that we get, uh, the time set and an agenda out for that canvas. And as you remember, that's open to the public and we'll get that information out to KOFO too, so they can put that on the radio. And we do have a couple of. And we do have a couple of things coming up this week that are related to the election. I'll be working today after I get the information from the Secretary of State's office to set our audit. We will be auditing four races. We audited a portion of the precincts to validate the election results. So we'll be auditing one federal race, one state race, one local race, and one precinct of the constitutional amendment to validate all of those results and thereby validating the county as a whole by selecting random precincts in each of those races. So we'll be getting that audit team set up as soon as we get the information from the Secretary of State's office to get that audit done. Also, we'll be convening our write-in board for those races that did have write-in spots, which would be, only be races that were, races that didn't have anyone file for that office or races that would be elected, like precinct committee people. Those races would have write-ins that we need to account for. So we'll be convening that write-in board this week also to look at all of those. So, so a few election items that we have coming up that still need to be done. We had a really great turnout yesterday. We had over fifty percent turnout in our county as a whole, which was really great. We ran really low on some of our ballot types and I ordered seventy-five percent of registered Democrats, registered Republicans, and then ordered seventy-five percent of the question-only ballot. But because a lot of our people went to the polls and decided to affiliate, we ran really short on some of our different ballot styles for one of the parties. But due to our new equipment where you can put the certified paper in and it will print out all of your choices on there and you don't need an actual printed ballot to vote on that. It really helped us out in a lot of our locations that we didn't need to have more ballots, which is really good for us. So for the turnout, I thought we had very, very minimal issues, nothing that we can't overcome. I always encourage all my election workers to keep a positive attitude all day because that really goes a long way, especially when voters are frustrated for one reason or another. I did sit at the Nazarene Church for about forty-five minutes yesterday and got the opportunity to wait on some voters. And I did have some voters that came in that were really confused by their party affiliation and they wanted to vote the other party's ballot because they knew someone that was on the ballot and they wanted to vote for that particular person. So having to explain that to voters, I have a very solid understanding of it. So I can't imagine what my election workers that only do this a couple of times a year, how they explain those things to voters. We try to educate them a lot, but it's difficult to give them all of the information, you know, in a training seminar and expect them to remember it on Election Day. So I thought all of my election workers did a pretty good job. They got all their information back to us fairly quickly and we were all reported out to the Secretary of State's office and gone home by ten o'clock last night. So that was a really good organized night. I have to give a special shout out to Dustin because I don't think any of you were down in my office last night, but I think you all know, in the past, we've all, we've used a whiteboard in my office to put up the results and everything's handwritten. But I decided this year that I wanted to try something different. As part of our new election equipment, last year I bought a projector so we could look at the write-ins on the computer. So my write-in board could look at those signatures and as a team, validate them. And so I thought we could just use that projector to put up those results in our office. So the day was very busy and it got away from me. Dustin came down at six o'clock last night to take a look and figure out how to get my projector set up to be able to do that. And so thank you so much, Dustin, for coming down and helping me with that. And I thought that was very well received by everyone and was up on the board and easy to read and it worked really well. So I think we'll plan to continue to do that in the future. So, still lots to clean up. We, the count that I had last night was a hundred and sixty-three provisionals. We still could get some more in the mail from our mail-in ballots. So, and we have a few mail-in ballots that we need to clean up for missing signatures and stuff. And we have the rest of the week to take care of that. So we'll be working hard on getting all those things finished up and ready for the canvas on Monday.
What do you think, Derek, about Monday as far as the study session goes?
So we have an item that we could study. You'll recall that we are supposed to have a study session here, not this week, the week before. But some medical issues prevented us from doing that. So we have at least one item, but it is not something that we have to study on Monday at all. So if you would rather, we can just plan on convening at the courthouse at nine. That is entirely up to you guys. And there could be something else out there that hasn't reached my desk yet, but I'm only aware of the one thing.
Okay, at this time, I think do the canvas at nine o'clock. All right, well, there. Unless something comes up.
Okay.
Good. Thank you, Janet. Don, do you have anything for us?
Most of my news is pretty old. I hadn't done anything much for two weeks, but the last thing I did before I shut down. I know Paul's helped a lot with this, is our economic development deal we've been doing through the Lake Region sponsor. We had one in Miami County two weeks ago, come tomorrow, and had it over there, went very well. Got a lot of good information from Miami County, I thought, too, on the New Polynesianic and what's happening and what's going on in conjunction with us. So, and we're going to have another one in November in OSH County. We've been trying to move it from one county to the other about every three or four months. So it gives an opportunity to, if you have any local commissioners or somebody that wants to attend one of them when we go move around. And then the MRC and D members have representatives from each county that allow, not allow, ask them if they'd want to attend being in their county, you know. So, but it's been going, I think, really well, the deal. Everybody that goes to it enjoys being there and get a lot of, a lot of times that I appreciate, especially Janet and Paul. Some of the others hadn't been in economic development that long and are pretty new to it. And that gives them a real helping hand, having two people like that there to guide them of what organizations maybe they need to be tied to or not tied to or just misinformation that they could, they pass on from their experience. So I think a lot of it's just that, you know. And I think they even enjoy being able to share their past, being in it so long, you know. The only thing I think I might mention is, I don't know, did you even mention the solid waste authority, anything, Connor, to me? I know we've had a discussion down there that it was brought to us and about making that a full-time position on the coordinator. And I didn't get to stay for the whole meeting because I had to go to that meeting. But I know it sounded like that we decided that we really wasn't going to go with the idea of full-time unless we can make some change.
Yes, sir, that is correct. So we met, you know, it's been a couple of weeks now as a, as a Lake Region Solid Waste Authority. And we, our executive director has expressed interest in this being a full-time job. My understanding is that years ago, it was a full-time job. But it was decided that unless circumstances changed, it would remain a part-time job. One of the things that a subcommittee is looking at is the possibility of adding additional counties to our region. Some counties that are not affiliated with any other regional groups like that. And so there's a possibility that at some point, our organization may bring that to each of the counties to see if each county is interested in adding. But we're ways away from any kind of discussion or thought on that. But it is a possibility. We've, we've got a very dynamic director now. And she's been very successful in acquiring grants for the counties. We're going to lean on ourselves on some things possibly coming up. And so we want to, we want to keep her. And this is a way for other counties to reap the same benefits that we do by having this individual handling these things for us.
And it's actually not a new idea. Actually, a few years ago, probably three or four years ago, we did have two counties come to our annual meeting and express interest. And there are adjoining counties that don't belong to any other organization. And at that time, we didn't feel we wanted to go any further at that time. And, and because, but we've changed coordinators now, so we've kind of changed attitudes, you know, on what is possible. You know, we didn't think it was possible back then. If by adding people, we didn't think the rest of us would gain anything out of it, you know. Where this way, if possible, if everything would be, go perfect, we would gain somebody to stay with us and doing a good job. And somebody else get the advantage of them plus pay their share to make it a better, bigger job, you know. So the only one thing I might have, I want to, I know we talked a long time ago about the commissioners pictures over there. And I know Casey was working on it. And there's a few years she couldn't find that had been eliminated from that. And she, at that time, she told me the only one she could find, other than the ones that were there, was the first five elected commissioners. And where they're at, I have no clue that, I mean, I don't know how anybody else feels, but I'd like to see them come back. I mean, that's something I don't think we wanted to just do away with, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, the pictures that we have, we can certainly hang up, but the ones we can't find.
She found one more. She found the original five, the elected commissioners.
I think what she found was the five that were here with the original administrator. So when you guys hired your first administrator.
That would have been the first elected five commissioners.
Okay, okay, fair enough. Yeah, we have that, but I do think there are years.
That actually, you know, because the first five would have been in two thousand or two thousand and one. And then the minister is like two thousand and four or five. So those would have all still been the same people.
I mean, it took me three years to finally get my picture taken and it's never been on the wall. So I agree with you. I think she, well, the reason that they didn't go on the wall because the frames didn't match with the what we had and the new one had different frame, but I'd like to see them on the wall.
That's why I think Casey mentioned too, that on the, on the ones she found, that it may not fit the frame that they had it in. But, you know, we could change that, you know. But that's what she mentioned.
Okay.
I just hate to see them get lost. I don't see much more about they're there or not there, but they tend to see to get lost if they're not, or people couldn't see them every day.
Yeah, well, we can, yeah, we can get those hung back up and, yeah.
Probably use tourism dollars because I can't imagine the amount of people who come here just to see those pictures.
No, but like when you, I'm sitting in the city commission, you know, it's cool to see who serves over the years.
Yeah. That's us. I've got the perfect employee that can do that. So yes, we'll, we'll figure it out. But yes, we'll get them back up. That's no problem.
I don't have anything more.
Last Thursday, last Thursday, I came into this room and I saw a lot of employees just laying around. Granted, they were giving blood, but they were laying, and actually, and I don't know what the final numbers were, but it looked like it was very well attended and most of them were county employees. From all, they weren't counties, so, or different departments. So it was very cool that we even did that. So that was very cool. And then just kudos to the voters in Franklin County that actually decided to vote. And I hope that you keep doing it because it really does make a difference. That's all I have.
I have nothing else.
A couple of things. We got a notification from K-CAM. See if anybody wants to be on the Board of Trustees. And I don't know if any one of us would want to be on that board. But who to tell Derek?
That's actually not a representative that be the trustee, right?
Right.
And my understanding is the link that was included wasn't you, it was password protected and I've reached out to K-CAM and can't.
Yeah, I tried to open, that's what I said to you, is I tried to open it and read it, but it's behind their members' wall or whatever, so you couldn't.
And I haven't heard back from them. If it's something that any of you are interested in, I'll pester them until we. But I think you have to be an elected official. I'm fairly sure.
Whoever was representing us, their position is up.
So, so our, so the Southeast Kansas group is represented by David Lamb. And David Lamb is the county clerk in Lynn County and he is going to be retiring. And I talked to them about the position last time they had an opening. Because I do have some interest in serving on that, just on our behalf of Southeast Kansas. I don't think now is the perfect time for me to be on there just due to some other commitments that I have with my county clerk duties. So I will definitely reach out to David and see what he, what he thinks. If he thinks there's someone else in Southeast Kansas, because I would hate to let that go by and someone in Southeast Kansas not put in for that position. And maybe it go to another district and we not have anyone in Southeast Kansas represent us. So I'll reach out to David and see if he's had any other interests from anyone else. But, and if the need be, then I definitely could put my name in for that if that's acceptable with you guys. By all means, if one of you guys want to sit on that board, those are the, that's the board that hears all of the major claims that are going to be a substantial impact to the, to the pool and helps make decisions on those and also makes rate decisions and things like that that dramatically impact us.
Go for it.
Okay, let Eric know if any, but all of us five wanted to. Okay, also I want to recognize Jamie Wilson for getting an excellent, I guess we'd call it a grade for appraisals and did another good job, you know, met all the requirements by the state. So his office is doing a good job. Just wanted to recognize him and the people that work for Jamie, does the appraisals, meets all those state standards, which is what we want to see. Only other thing is we've got a luncheon today. Be entertained by Paul, he's going to tell us all about what he knows, so. I don't have anything else.
It would be a city hall.
It's a city hall.
I doubt it's an easy job to be an appraiser, county appraiser ever, but talk about a moving target lately. Trying to guess the value and get within your, your margin of error. You need a motion through Dern, Roy?
Yes, I do. All the favors, hi.